It's called April 19th, City Council meeting order. Mr. Smith, if you could give us the per place.
Again, thank you for giving me the blessing bestowed upon us for this opportunity to be servants here in the city of Apopka. We ask for what that you continue to lead us, guide us in the way that you have us to go. That all that we shall say and do be pleasing and accepted in your sight. And heaven forbid we continue to pray for the city staff, oh God, for it. Advance, oh God, to continue to touch its body as only you can. These blessings we ask in thy son, Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fact of the day. On April 19th, 1861, the first casualties of the American Civil War occurred when a sensationalist mob in Baltimore, Maryland, attacked Massachusetts troops bound for Washington DC. And all four soldiers and 12 writers was killed during the scrimmage. Fact of the day.
Minutes in progress, anybody need changes?
Um, there were some changes that I did, um, refer to the city clerk and that's going to get corrected. So that has to do with the end.
The what now?
At the end of the minutes.
Okay, can you tell us what they are?
Oh, here, I'm sorry. It's on, my mic is on. I know, I keep. That had to do with the end. The motion by Commissioner Becker, second by Commissioner Nestor regarding the termination of the city of attorney. There was a dialogue that was before that and it's so, it's missing.
Okay. So do we have those?
Uh, no, it hasn't been done. I, I just gave her that, uh, late, I gave it to her to this late this afternoon.
Before we approve those, I need to, we need to read out what the changes are.
Oh, okay. That would be to amend and that would be page 21. Before the mayor's report and after the motion made regarding the change of manager still open. And Michael Rodriguez stated the RFP, or RFP is still open, so we are in a cone of silence. It was after that that there was a dialogue between the chair and Commissioner Becker before the motions that were made. And that's missing completely.
Okay, alright. But those changes, motion to approve the minutes?
Well, without seeing them, I would just table this to the next meeting. I don't know what that's going to reflect. Unless we want to, right?
Okay, okay.
Table. But with that said, I mean, the minutes that we would have approved tonight, obviously, the last bit of those minutes does talk about the termination of our attorney. I see him present in the council chambers this evening. What's the interpretation of staff or the administration as to why that action was not, um, respected?
I guess it's, uh, well, I guess it's, uh, it's the, the will of the council and the mayor, not as a council three to two vote.
So I think, and I won't speak for the majority of that vote, but we interpret the charter with that ability afforded to the city council and the mayor being part of that city council. My interpretation of the charter, and I'll let the others decide whether their interpretation is the same. But since we are at a stalemate on this topic, I would move that we get a declaratory judgment and we all come back to this, these council chambers with an attorney that we would like to represent the majority in that vote the last meeting. So if the administration's not going to interpret it the same as the majority, I would move that we, um, uh, challenge the opinion of the, of the chair and our city attorney and seek declaratory judgment from a third party. If that's, uh, the will of the council. So I make that motion and with the idea that we come back the next meeting with a list of attorneys that we might think would defend us in that position.
Okay, well, before I make the motion on that, I just want to make public that, um, I feel that the vote was three to two and it was not ceremonial. I have not found anything in the charter or in the Florida state statute that says that a, an official vote taken at an official public council meeting can be arbitrarily determined as ceremonial. So I'll make a, I'll second that.
Yeah, I mean, I think in, obviously I, I, I could that same sentiment. I just think that we're at a stalemate, so why not just have somebody come in and finalize it one way or the other and let's keep moving? It's not that difficult, so let's just figure it out one way or the other.
Yep.
Okay, got a motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Aye, motion carries forward to one. Okay. Okay, I'm going to read this pre-meeting statement, should have read it before this, but welcome to tonight's public meeting of the city council, city of Apopka. At this time, we request that all cell phones be either turned off or placed in silent mode. It is desire of this council to run an efficient and constructive public meeting. If you wish to address the city council, please make sure you fill out a card and have presented it to the city clerk. If you're requested to speak when your name is called, please proceed to the podium and speak clearly into the microphone, stating your name, address of record, organization if any, and whether or not you are a city resident. And direct your comments to the city council as a collegiate body. The purpose of this public comment portion of the meeting is to receive citizen input pertaining to matters over which the city council has jurisdiction or control. This period of time is for comments and not for questions directed to the city council or staff for immediate answer. Questions directed to the city council may be referred to staff to be answered within a reasonable period of time following the date of the meeting. Please observe general rules of decorum and civility, speak one at a time, avoiding personal attacks, avoid shouting, speak only at, to the issue at hand. The city council and city staff encourage constructive criticism. Without, all personal attacks directed toward the city council or its individual members, city staff, citizens of the city, and members of the audience are prohibited. Any violation of these provisions may result in the issuance of a verbal warning. If the offending behavior should continue after the warning, the speaker may be curtailed or otherwise be asked to conclude their comments or presentation. Continuation thereafter may result in the removal of such person from the city council chambers. The city council kindly asks for your cooperation in conducting a civil and efficient public meeting. Thank you. Okay, first up, we got a proclamation for denim day. Is, aha. Let's see here.
Good evening.
You want to go ahead and?
Uh, sure.
Mr. Damiani?
Good evening, good evening, Mayor Nelson, commissioners. Thank you so much for having me, me here this evening to, um, for, for, for several years in a row now for honoring, uh, the denim day campaign. That is the longest standing sexual violence campaign ever in history. And, um, my name is Louis Damiani. I'm executive director of the Victim Service Center of Central Florida, where for the last 24 years, we have served victims of violent crime, sexual assault, and other kinds of trauma across Central Florida. What that means in real terms is last year, we served 326 sexual assault victims that were in crisis. We took 2,100 helpline calls. We conducted over 3,000, 3,188 therapy sessions. And we helped 6,700 clients in and around Central Florida. And best of all, all of those services were provided 100% free of charge to all of the clients that came through our door. And participation, are we going to, would you like me to read it or are you going to?
I've got the proclamation, you can read the proclamation.
You going to read it?
Yes, sir.
So participation, what you're about to learn about here shortly when the proclamation gets read, is that participation in denim day is absolutely free. It's super easy to get engaged and involved. And, you know, I'm just, uh, I'm honored to have the city of Apopka, city of Orlando. I was in Kissimmee last night, Osceola County, Seminole County, Orange County. All have proclaimed, um, the 26th of, of April as denim day. That's the last Wednesday of the month. It always happens on the last Wednesday of the month. And it's a big, what it turns into is a big social media campaign. And we encourage everyone to wear denim on denim day. And by doing so, standing in solidarity with those victims that have been victimized by sexual violence and, and really taking a stand against sexual violence in our community. So by the mere fact of just wearing some jeans, you can make a social statement and take a stand against sexual violence. Super easy to do and get involved if you, if you want to. We have a, we have a site on our website, we have a whole page on our website dedicated to denim day. I gave you guys all posters, but you can download your own poster. So if those of you in the room want to get engaged and get involved in your workplace, you can print out posters. We have, uh, we have, actually, if you're doing, if you're working remote, we have a Zoom, a background you can download and put it up right behind you on your, uh, on your home video, so everybody will know you're supporting denim day. And just a lot of other resources, we have a 92nd, um, a video that you can watch and download. And it talks all about the history of denim day and why it's so important. And then together on that day, all we ask is you take a picture of yourself in your jeans. And I'm wearing, I'm decked out in my denim, right? And then you post it to your social media, tag us at VSC Florida, and use the hashtag denim day and then just watch the, watch it explode. We, we will have followers all across Central Florida. Last year, it spread all the way into Southern Georgia. So, um, we're creating awareness about, about sexual violence in our respective communities and more about, uh, ending that violence here in Central Florida. So I just honor you and I thank you for taking a stand against sexual violence and, and, and having us here tonight.
Thank you. Did anybody come from the Mexican consulate? I know we had somebody that was supposed to come, okay, maybe not, okay. Well, I just, one of the things, I'd like everybody to know in the audience that on Wednesday, the 26th, we're going to have all the city employees or anybody who wants to dress in denim is going to help fund your, your denim day. And also at night at city hall and then at the, the pond, we'll have the, the pond lights will be.
Lit and teal.
Will be a teal color.
Awesome.
Yeah, we're, 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 uh, love what you do and, and we're here to support you any way we can.
Well, we appreciate you. We didn't even, by the way, ask you all to raise money for us, but every year, uh, the mayor sees, sees that the employees contribute and we are always grateful to have a few dollars thrown our way.
We got a small kind of a down payment on what we hope to, to raise for you next week.
Appreciate you so much.
So, so with that, I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas the month of April is National Sexual Assault Awareness Month, calling attention to the fact that sexual assault and harassment is widespread and harms our community. And whereas the shocking reality is that one in five women and one in 33 men will be sexually assaulted during their lifetime. And whereas on denim day, the movement started in 1999 as a grassroots protest against an absurd, controversial Italian Supreme Court decision in which a sexual assault conviction was overturned because the victim was wearing tight jeans at the time of her attack. And whereas denim day is the longest running sexual violence prevention and education campaign in history, which seeks to rid the world of erroneous and destructive attitudes about sexual assault and bring about real justice and support for survivors. And whereas denim day encourages everyone to make a social statement by wearing jeans on this day as a visible means of protest against the misconceptions that surround sexual violence and to speak up when they hear comments that blame victims or make light of sexual harassment or assault. And whereas together we can change how people think and talk about this kind of violence and create a culture of respect, equality, and safety for our entire community. And whereas the city of Apopka strongly supports the Victim Service Center of Central Florida and their efforts to prevent the traumatizing effects of sexual violence and help heal those that have been impacted. Now therefore, I, Brian Nelson, Mayor of the city of Apopka, do hear our proclaim Wednesday, April 26th, 2023 as denim day. And we'll come down and get a picture. Okay, next up, presentation, city cemetery update. Mr. Williams.
Uh, Radley Williams, Parks and Recreation Director. Good evening, mayor and commissioners. Uh, I've got a brief cemetery update to go through with you tonight. I've been working in conjunction with our city clerk, Susan, um, to put this together and we can run through it and see if anybody has any questions. Just an update on the capital projects, uh, that were a result of the coronavirus relief funds. The repave of the cemetery driveways was completed. We have installed the fencing around the new section of the cemetery. And we are in the process of procuring two new columbariums. I just went ahead and put up the numbers for what was allocated and what actual numbers we're looking at right now. Uh, we are working on some concept plans for a location to install a columbarium in the cemetery. So we'll have some more information here soon on, on some of those ideas to present to you. But the roadway has turned out beautiful. The new fencing around the new section of the cemetery, um, really identifies that area well. So we're, we're happy with where we're going on those areas. We're going to be coming back, uh, at the next council meeting with, uh, an ordinance update uh, for some proposed fees and some rule, uh, updates. Susan helped put these together, uh, listing out our current fees, uh, resident versus non-resident, and the new proposed fees, resident versus non-resident. So you'll see there's a little increase, um, that we're going to be proposing. On this next slide, uh, provide you kind of a breakdown of some area cemeteries and their pricing structure. Apopka proposed fees are in the left-hand column there, going all the way across Winter Garden of Coe, Orlando and Winter Park. Of note, Winter Park only allows resident only. So in the other areas, it's resident slash non-resident. Winter Park, it's only resident. The delineation there is they have two cemetery, cemeteries. So one cemetery, the regular space is 2,800, the other cemetery, it's 5,500. So if you look, we're in the ballpark with the proposed fees. The columbarium niche, we're not promoting, proposing any change on that. It's currently a thousand dollars for resident, 1,400 for non-resident. And we're excited to get those installed in the cemetery. Also of note, uh, if the fees are approved to be increased, that will also increase the amount of money being deposited into the perpetual fund for the cemetery. So those increases will help continue that fund and strengthen that fund. Cemetery operations, Parks and Recreation works closely with the city clerk's office, um, to operate the cemetery. The city clerk is responsible for the administrative selling of the, of the spaces and the plots. Uh, our parks and recreation, recreation staff are in, in charge of maintaining the grounds, visiting with the family members, helping guide them to spaces if they're looking for spaces, and then also showing them cemetery plots, uh, and marking plots. So, uh, we do a lot of upkeep and maintenance on the cemetery grounds, trying to keep them looking the best we can. And that's the reason we've implemented rules, regulations concerning maintenance and decoration of grave spaces to help not only maintain a nice, well-kept cemetery, but also keep the cemetery safe and enjoyable for everybody that visits. And these rules, current rules and regulations are available at the city clerk's office and they're given to every person that purchases a spot at the cemetery. So at the next meeting, we'll bring back the strike throughs of the changes that are proposed. But just in general, these updates are going to include some clarification on items that are and are not allowed at grave sites, a policy regarding flower arrangements and, and some timelines for when those, uh, should be picked up. And, um, basically the locations of those flowers and cemetery, uh, decorations. And, and there's some photos of the current state of the cemetery. There's some areas that make it challenging for maintenance operations and to keep the cemetery in a tight and orderly fashion. As we go through this, we are proposing a cleanup process, um, and kind of outlining how we would go through that once the rules and regulations are approved and updated. We're looking to try and begin this project on June 1st. Again, this is to help maintain an attractive and safe cemetery for everybody that visits. The city clerk's office will be noticing, uh, through the city website, the newsletter, and then we'll also be posting signs at the individual plots as we are making the cleanup process. So we're going to go section at a time. It won't be blanket wide cemetery cleanup, it'll be a section at a time, it'll be noticed, and then we'll move forward. And then also, again, rules and regulations are on file at the city clerk's office. So if anybody has questions, they can, can go, uh, see the clerk. That's all I have for today. Like I said, we'll be bringing back an ordinance update, um, at the May, or the first May meeting. And it'll have all the strike throughs for the, for the rule proposals.
Any questions for Radley?
I got a couple. Uh, first, just want to say thank you for showing the allocated versus actual. That's just helping for us to understand where we're at. Can you go back to the fee comparison? So in Winter Garden of Coe, Orlando, where it says NA, is that they don't have those available or they don't charge?
Correct, they don't have those available as a specific, uh, fee. So typically what will happen is if you look at Winter Garden, if you're a child space and infant spaces or a cremane space, you'd pay a regular space price.
Gotcha.
So we have different levels of fees for those different scenarios.
I would be interested to explore not charging for the children's or baby's faces. I mean, whatever everybody wants, but that's, that would just be rough. So that'd be nice just to look into, see if that's, I mean, it's a couple hundred dollars, so it's not like we're.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, that'd be the pleasure of, of the council. Like I said, some cemeteries don't have that category, we do have that category, so that's an option.
Okay. And then for the, uh, if you go to the next slides about the maintenance and regulations, is this what you dropped off to us, is this current or is this new?
That's what, yeah.
This is new? Okay, got it. So with the things that are going to be, I mean, showing the pictures of obviously what we're going to call out of compliance for the new regulations, nothing's going to be grandfathered in at all. It's going to be, we're removing everything that we see should this get approved, everything's going to be removed.
If it does not fall into the guidelines that are approved, we would.
Okay.
Move to, again, give notice and then move to cleanup.
Okay, so I think it would be advantageous, because you're, this will start June 1st?
That was our timeline. Obviously, if, if more discussion happens at the next meeting for the ordinance update, we can revise that.
Okay.
But I don't believe we've noticed anything at, to this point.
Some of this stuff could be valuable, it could be commemorative, it could be anything that is just important or impactful to the families. So I don't know, I don't want to be storing things for a lot, a long time, but I, I don't know if we can figure out a way. Like you said, if we're doing sections, kind of store it for 90 days, 120 days. And then once that, once it is removed, then even though we're giving the notice, just to give as much ample time as possible. Not everybody frequents the cemetery, so just to give that option.
Yeah, and we can look at the timeline. Again, that was just an initial, uh, a look at a possible start.
Sure.
We can extend that, get, get a lot of notice out. And, and again, the plan is to go section by section and put notification signs at those sections with a link to the rules and the clerk's office.
Definitely, I just want to be as sensitive as possible to this process.
Right, yeah, it's very, we got to be very respectful through this process and, and you know, there's, um, there's a right way to do this. And, and we definitely are, are definitely going to make that.
Absolutely, thank you.
Yep.
Uh, that was my concern as well, as the removal of the items that are there. And when you say we're going to notice them, is that just by US mail or?
I'll let, I'll let Susan kind of step in on noticing, because that'll be handled at clerk's office.
Yeah, so, um, we were going to, um, put the.
Is your mic on?
Get closer to the mic, too.
Okay, so, um, we can send out, um, you know, to, depending on the violations, you know, like if it's just dead flowers or this kind of stuff. But, um, people that have things, larger items, things like that, um, we can send out to, a, a letter to. And we can, you know, that way they can have the time, because we're going to give them a certain amount of time to come and collect their items, you know, so that we don't, so that they can do it theirself. And, and, um, just basing this on the ways that a, a couple of other local cemeteries have, have also done their cleanups. You know, it's kind of like, you know, um, city of Ocoe, for instance, um, just went through one. So, so they did a, you know, I spoke to them and they, they did a similar cleanup, but they, they noticed all, all of the, the owners of the graves, so.
Alright, and so most of the.
That's better.
So most of the grave spot owners, we have some current addresses, contact information?
For the most part, but we do have some things that do come back, so.
Well, I, I agree with Commissioner Nestor, we just need, you know, be as sensitive as possible.
Absolutely.
Mr. Becker?
Uh, they, they covered the questions I would have had. We had discussed this on Monday, it's more of a request than anything else, since we're on this topic. And a little bit of a backstory, so about two or three years ago, a resident reached out. They were doing some tours of various cemeteries around town and they had stumbled across Bay Ridge Cemetery, which is located there off Joey McGuckin. It's in a state of disrepair. I had actually reached out and finally connected with the person who oversees that property. She's just not in a state where she can do it. It's a privately owned, uh, uh, you know, overseeing piece of property and she just doesn't have the ability to do it. I've had many conversations with her. In fact, uh, former Chief Manley and Donnie Williams with the Rotary Club actually did some, uh, clearing of that property at one stage. But again, it's hard for the Rotary to take that on as a, as an ongoing maintenance type of issue. She is more than welcome to annex this, the piece of property into the city and turn over ownership of that property. If we could somehow find a way to maintain it. It's not a very big property, it's about two and a half acres. I would say that people on premise, um, those that are resting places there probably only are sitting on a certain footprint of that cemetery. But these are names that probably if people went to the museum of the Apopkins would actually see names on those gravestones that are in the museum itself. In fact, I, I talked to a couple at the amphitheater at one of the Saturday sounds recently, um, whose kin are, are there resting as well. So I don't know if it's possible for you to just kind of do a little bit of a, um, maybe an estimate on what it would entail to, to take ownership of that and put it on a maintenance schedule? Because I, like I said, I don't think it would be that much in terms of operating cost. There's been several, uh, you know, nonprofit organizations that have volunteered to do stuff there, like the Boy Scouts and some other organizations. But I think they would be best served coming in after the fact, after all the dangerous, you know, things are out of the way
Right.
for general upkeeping, whether that be grave site cleaning, um, this, that, and the other, so.
Where's that at?
Off Joey McGuckin, if you go up Clemens Rento. It's on, if you pass by Oak Ridge neighborhood, you're right, a little bit to the left, if you go down Joey McGuckin, it's on the north side of that property. If you previously, when we first, when that resident first reached out to me a few years back, if you would have driven past it, you would have known. It, it was a heavily wooded piece of property.
Gotcha.
So I think, you know, keeping it something that's well cared for and respectful there, um, I would be more than happy if we could pursue that.
Yeah, I can certainly work with our park superintendent to work up an estimate costs of annually maintaining that area and that property. And if you'd like to share, I can connect with the, with the landowner and. And if you'd like to share, I can connect with the landowner and start some talks with that and see what's possible.
Certainly. Right, thank you.
That was recently just brought up, I think a month ago, and it was Verona, the pizza owner. Yeah, that actually did bring it up.
And kudos to her. She's very, she advocates well for that piece of property and rightfully so, so.
Yeah. Well, you know, we spoke, and I literally have walked that entire cemetery looking for my own spot. So it's true, I did. We haven't decided yet. And if he's watching me, yay, I'm sorry. But we did get, add two new sections, and just talk a little bit about that. How many more did we add in the two new sections?
Yes, I'll let Susan kind of fill up under that. I know we're doing, I know those, the newest section in the back where the fence was installed, we have not sold any in that space. But the front section, where we did also put a new split rail fence in to kind of delineate that from the open grass field, I know a lot of those spaces have sold already. Yeah, so there's still a lot of capacity in the cemetery, and there's a lot of opportunity for expansion as we continue to move, but it's really the capital improvements that have been invested this past year with the roadways and the fencing and the columbariums when we get those installed, it's a beautiful cemetery.
It really is. It has a rich history, and since you've improved the roads, that's been the biggest plus for that cemetery, because it was kind of difficult to maneuver, and now it's kind of easy to drive around, so. And you have a wonderful staff and a caring and respectful staff.
Yeah, our two cemetery employees are very good at what they do.
We do. So that's it.
Thank you.
So you have a number, Susan? I can't, I mean, we have for next...
The F3 was supposed to, the capacity was about 880, and the other one was 1,400 and, you know, 425.
So 1,200 new spaces, yeah.
Yeah, and then the other one, we haven't really...
Marked, yeah.
We've got plenty, but we had to remove a bunch of trees. So we've got, we've got to get that resurfated.
Okay. Let me ask you this, and this is going on the financials of a cemetery, which I don't completely understand, and that's why this question is, where, so the funds that come from the purchase of the lots or the plots, what does that go into? Are we investing those? Because eventually, that money runs out, correct?
That's the reason we have, we set up a perpetual fund to fund it in perpetuity. So I don't know what, you remember what?
It's 20% of the sale price goes to perpetual fund.
And what is it now? We're at...
I'm not sure. I'd have to get with...
I want to say 80,000, Susan?
Yeah.
I know it's north of 60, but so we're trying to, I mean, the goal is when it's full, that we've got enough money in an account to fund the maintenance for, in perpetuity.
Yeah.
So that's, that's the reason I set the perpetual fund.
Gotcha, okay. Yeah, I was curious what that looks like, so, okay. Thank you.
But yeah, we'll get you the number.
Yeah.
We can work with finance and Susan.
Okay, awesome. All right. Thank you, Radley.
Thank you.
Next up, downtown Apopka Vision Plan. Pam, you're going to, give us a little background, and then we'll, you'll bring on the troops?
Oh, I'm not going to steal their thunder. I think they've got that all planned. I'm just here to remind you all, this is not an action item. This is not a city project. It never was. It never was intended to be. This is a group of, I thought I was going to have an opportunity to mentor, but as it turns out, most of them are more accomplished than I am.
They're mentoring you?
And the ones that are entry level are way smarter than I was when I was starting out. So I'm just going to let them do their thing. This is a learning experience for them.
Awesome. So who's running point?
Logan.
Good evening. My name is Logan Lampier.
There's a button right?
Can raise the lectern up.
Oh.
Or did all the way? Okay, there you go.
Perfect.
Tall person problem, yeah. Thank you so much, Pam, and Mr. Mayor and all the commissioners. Thank you for all of your support over the last seven months, actually, in this program. My name's Logan Lampier, and I'm representing a group of 16 graduate students from the University of Central Florida's Masters of Urban and Regional Planning Program. We began work with you last August with the help of our Professor Dr. Louis Santiago, and also Emily Hana from Bike Walk Central Florida. They helped bring this together. We have a pretty diverse group. Some of us are right out of undergraduate studies. Some of us are not right out of graduate, undergraduate studies. Some of us have quite a bit of experience and have been working in local city-county government or related industries for a while. Some of us were born and raised right here in Orange County, and some of us are international students. So we have a pretty broad group of perspectives and bring some experience to this vision plan for downtown Apopka. So as I mentioned, we began back in August, last semester, we're still working in semesters, and we looked at some of the previous work that had been done for the entire city. Our focus, though, has been just on the downtown portion of Apopka. We did an asset inventory, analyzed current data, and we looked at five particular study areas: land use, demographics, infrastructure, market analysis, and urban form. And from that, we put together some short-term and long-term proposals. This is the actual study area that we tried to go by. It goes roughly from Hawthorne Avenue to Sheeler, and from First Avenue to, First Street down to Sixth Street, all within the current city limits. So basically, it's Highway 441, your main street, and then the few blocks to the north and south of that. The projects we put together, we wanted feedback on those from the Apopka community. So we put together a survey and got 327 results from that survey, people responding, which was fantastic. We were overjoyed, and a lot of that's in part due to some of you on the council for sharing that, and also your wonderful local media, the Apopka Voice and the Apopka Chief both helped get the word out. We held five community events, some of them up at the amphitheater, some downtown here at the brewery. Then we also held a community workshop, which all of you here tonight attended. Thank you again, and we learned a lot from all of you, had some great conversations. We had over 40 attendees at that workshop. And for those of you here tonight, the poster boards are out in the foyer from that event, and you're all welcome to take a look at those and see the feedback that some of the attendees put down on those posters. So from all of that, we came up with five proposals, and really, these are meant to activate the public realm of downtown Apopka and make it a place where people want to live, work, and play. That'll be a theme you'll hear this evening. The first of the projects is sort of a marketing branding campaign of the main street. We'll also look at redesigning US 441, applying the complete streets principles to the other streets downtown, proposing a pocket park system, you'll learn about those, and also developing a housing development toolkit. So the first one, marketing and branding, we're not quite a professional marketing firm, but we wanted to present some high-level visions and ideas to the community. And those, after the workshop, we found that people really liked the logo that we had proposed. We also wanted to pay homage to the history of Apopka, being the foliage capital of the world. So you'll see the ferns, which you already have in some of your branding, and a slogan, rediscover downtown Apopka. There's a lot of amazing growth going on in Apopka right now. We ask you, remember about, remember your downtown, remember the core of your city and the opportunities that are here. Some of the aspects that people liked the most about downtown Apopka was that it has a small-town feel, and the West Orange Trail goes through the heart of downtown. We also looked at some opportunities to brand and market the area, possibly through banners, signs, columns, especially at the entrances to downtown. So as people are coming off of 436 or 441, they realize, oh, I'm entering downtown Apopka. Maybe, maybe a sign on the West Orange Bridge that goes over the road. We have a number of different proposals then for improving that branding and that marketing of downtown Apopka. The other suggestion we have is participating in the Main Street America program, and there's a lot of great success stories here in central Florida. Orlando alone, I think, has 11 Main Street districts. Claremont, Winter Garden, Sanford have all done that, and the evidence is out there that a small investment upfront in the Main Street program has produced a lot of reinvestment in those areas, redevelopment, reinvigoration, a lot of new jobs. And so that's one of our proposals for you in this program. Our next proposal, and the next three actually, are going to be spoken to from Carter Gresham, another participant in our program.
Thank you very much. Again, my name is Carter Gresham. Thank you each and every one of you for your time tonight, and also thank you for the community for coming out and listening to this final project. As Logan has already hit on quite a bit, what does kind of a downtown or a Main Street feel like? I want to kind of shift gears and what can a Main Street or a downtown district look like? So what we'll do is we'll talk about, as Logan just hit on, the redesign of US 441, kind of working within the capacity and the parameters of the existing roadway, the complete streets, again, kind of casting out, looking at the connectivity and the grid beyond US 441, and then looking at the pocket park system, and really, green space as a whole. So when speaking about a Main Street, when speaking about an activated downtown district, we oftentimes will hearken back to case studies or case studies in the area. We don't need to kind of go back much farther than, I don't know, the 1900s, because this is Apopka. This is what we, we kind of immediately, this is kind of what we envision as an activated Main Street. This probably early, I think it's 1920s, 1930s probably. So essentially, you have expanded promenades, you have landscaping, you've got palms, you've got some canopy, and you've got buildings pushed to the road. So you've got an activated, kind of a successful Main Street. On the right is what you have today, and again, a successful Main Street, but successful at a different task and a different goal. And then this Main Street, the Main Street of kind of today, the US 441 of today, that goal is moving vehicles through the area as quickly as possible, or trucks. So again, it's successful at achieving that goal, but it's a very different goal than what we're going for. So what does that look like for an activated US 441? What does that look like for a downtown district within Apopka? So what we wanted to do, as I said, work within the existing capacity and the existing right-of-way of US 441. So what you'll see on your screens here and of the community, on the far left is the Phase 1, essentially kind of the initial foundational changes, and Phase 2. Phase 1 has three major kind of items and elements within the implementation. The first is, to be honest, immediately from an experiential basis. When we were all doing our analysis, all of our time within Apopka outside of this class and in this class, one of the biggest things that came up, and we've heard from the community time and time again, is how uncomfortable walking down US 441 can be, no matter the time of day, no matter the time of year. And that oftentimes comes down to pedestrian comfort, pedestrian experience. So is that canopy, is that a space to stop and kind of take it, kind of gather your breath, take a breath, and kind of like sit at the benches? Is there a way that we can kind of infuse a little bit more and focus more of our efforts on that public realm? So that first aspect in Phase 1 is actually starting to look at, and before I say this, there's a qualifier, parking, and I'm not taking away parking. We want to ensure, and working with numerous business owners and stakeholders throughout this process, we want to ensure that everything we're proposing is celebrating, is uplifting, and is enhancing the businesses on US 441. We want to make sure that none of this is in conflict with them. So what you'll actually see is the parking stays the same. However, there is a lot of what's called just paint striping on US 441, and what's called a bulb out or a neck down, which is essentially that triangular shape at the end of all of the parking kind of lanes. Those things that you're actually seeing in a lot of smaller communities, as well as larger communities, actually get dug up and in place and kind of replaced with what's called a bulb out landscape median. Essentially, you would have a curbed standalone median. We want to ensure that whatever we're kind of implementing here is also working with drainage, any flooding issues. We want to make sure that we're not completely re-envisioning US 441. We want to work within that capacity. But in those landscape areas, you have a little bit more space for the promenade, a little bit more space for the sidewalks, and some space for some native shrubs that could, we kind of find a way to celebrate the native flora and kind of fauna of Apopka. We also wanted to focus on, again, that public realm, so canopy trees, palms, flowering trees. The second aspect is a similar aspect, but it's looking at that central median through the middle of US 441. This one is obviously contingent on obviously some, quite a bit of coordination with FDOT to understand the stacking requirements of that central turn lane. But what we wanted to do is looking forward and looking through that coordination, if there are areas where that island could be expanded. Are there areas that we could essentially kind of start to break up US 441 instead of it having just these massive lanes of people flying down, going hopefully 35 or 40, but oftentimes not so much? But one of the things that this interacts with and kind of brings to the table is, one, obviously, that's kind of breaking up the roadway and breaking up the asphalt, but it's also incorporating and introducing into US 441 something called traffic calming and side friction. Side friction is kind of this psychological thing that we've all learned about in school about, if you're driving down incredibly fast down, let's say, US 441, and there are lots of things passing you very quickly, psychologically, a tree stump, a tree stalk, kind of any of those types of things, psychologically, you slow down slightly. Not going to say you're going to drop 10 in a second, but you're going to slow down quite a bit because of the psychology of all of the things passing you, and automatically there's a little bit of a safety kind of takeover there. The final thing, and you really don't see it in Phase 1, and that's on purpose, is a slight restriping of the lanes. Right now, you're looking at lanes on US 441 of about 11 to 12 feet. That is great for funneling NASCAR racers. So what we wanted to look at is if you're actually looking at a little bit of a restriping, they're dropping it to 10 or 11. Again, very comfortable for drivers, but ensuring that people aren't just beaming down US 441. In Phase 2, again, a relatively similar phase, but it's building on the momentum of Phase 1, what you'll see are what's called mid-block crossings. And this came up a lot in the survey, in a lot of the Saturday concerts at the park and at the workshop, about people seeing, experiencing, and we all can say from firsthand knowledge, people just walking across US 441 wherever they see fit, which from a connectivity standpoint is fantastic, from a security and a safety standpoint is deadly. We need to ensure that where we are funneling people through in these connections are pointed, they're limited, and they're prioritized. We don't need to do a mid-block crossing on every block, look at three or four in studies and say, these are our most frequently passed intersections, and that's where a mid-block crossing can go. Now, the last bullet under Phase 2 is kind of what I like to call kind of the hardening of the crosswalk, installing, the installation of what's called RFBs, Rapid Flashing Beacons. You're seeing them on a lot of small communities, as well as larger communities and larger thoroughfares, but they are essentially a pedestrian can go up, trigger this little sign, and flashing lights would show up under a pedestrian crosswalk sign. It's obviously not a fully signalized crossing, however, there would still be a notification and a highlight of someone crossing the street there. So let's keep moving on. So let's go beyond US 441 and look at connectivity in general. We wanted to look at complete streets in kind of a holistic, generalized fashion, where we can start to look at beyond US 441 and beyond just that sole, kind of that sole Apopka Trail going north-south, as well as US 441 moving east-west. We wanted to look at, and what we're showing on our screen is kind of a prototype that could be used on many different streets, adjusted and studied on other streets, but trying to find a way that we can infuse, again, expanded sidewalks and promenades, trying to find ways that we can add more, let's say, public real estate and public realm to some of these businesses that front on these side streets, to ensure that we're creating a connected network throughout the area. What you'll see on the screen here is actually looking at, and this, this project originally was starting to only look at six, and kind of has expanded over time, rightfully so and successfully so, to start to look at what's the network beyond US 441 and beyond the West Orange Trail and beyond the Trail in Apopka, to try and find a way, is there a loop? Is there, is this becoming an attraction in and of itself, and how are we fully fleshing out and substantially kind of adding to that downtown district and that downtown experience? And finally, as I kind of hit on just a moment ago, we want to look, so much that we look on when it comes to safety and enhancement and celebrating a downtown district is going to be focused on the trail or is going to be focused on US 441, and we feel that that is successful. But we want to ensure that the areas surrounding US 441 are brought into the conversation as well. We want to celebrate all of the areas in this downtown core and not just US 441 as the only Main Street or the only activated enhanced street. Now, let's move and shift gears for the final kind of, let's say, the tangible and intangible. We talked about pocket park here, but I'm going to say green spaces as well. When we talk about green spaces and pocket parks in general, and this was wildfire at the workshops, which is great and was exciting to see, a lot of people oftentimes immediately go to, oh, large green... go to, oh, large green spaces, large recreational spaces. Green spaces and smaller pocket parks, parklets, really add and kind of add a substantiation to the public realm that a large green space, which is incredibly hard to find, is difficult to interact and different, difficult to implement. So what we wanted to talk about, and it came up again, like I said, in the survey as well, is pocket parks, parklets, and mini-parks. Oftentimes, these are running a quarter acre, give or take a bit, and more than anything, they're context sensitive. It's not just about, okay, how many fields or how many basketball courts, how many soccer fields do we need? It's about, okay, what are the businesses in the area? How do we celebrate those businesses? How do we kind of bring these businesses out into the district? And how do we enliven these areas? So what we did, and this is going to be a little bit interesting to talk about, what we wanted to look at is both public and private land. And we're not saying we're flipping private land, but an opportunity lies in the idea that oftentimes in communities that are interacting and kind of interested in the idea of a pocket park system as kind of a substantiation of their larger green space system, are looking at public and private partnerships. A lot of times Appalachia, smaller towns in Florida, you're starting to see some of these land, these smaller parcels that, let's say, had a business on it one day, and for years and years and years, it was incredibly popular business and it went out of business. And over time, let's say, the building was torn down and it sat as a vacant land or it's in between owners. A lot of times in communities, they are going into these areas and saying, well, this is the gap. This is a gap between a major, activated, exciting business district. How do we fill this gap while we're looking for a new owner or for a new kind of, someone to breathe life into the area? And a lot of times, you're seeing people come in with pocket parks. You're looking at something like this. So I wanted to use a little bit, we're talking about a visioning plan, so let's talk about a vision. So I'm not going to say specifically where this is, but I know everybody on the dais and probably plenty of people in the community can figure it out pretty quick. So what we wanted to do is just kind of start to look at public and private parcels to see, how are you highlighting, how are you celebrating the businesses in the area? So is it near a restaurant or a pub that maybe they will have their own outdoor seating, but let's say some people want to go sit and wait for their table to be called? Let's go have a little bit more extra seating. Is it a space near the trail that we need additional bike infrastructure, bike racks, bike repair stalls? Do we need more canopy? How are we going to celebrate kind of the cultural mecca of kind of that foliage capital of Apopka and of the world? How are we telling the story of Apopka and using our pocket parks, using our green space, and using our park system to actually realize that story? And finally, let's take it back out to the 30,000-foot level. We wanted to say before we kind of moved on too, we wanted to take a look at also other larger green spaces, because in US 441 and in the downtown district area, gigantic, let's say gigantic, green spaces are hard to come by. And oftentimes, those are, sometimes, green spaces can be overprogrammed, or sometimes green spaces can be programmed to a point that they're just, they lose the idea of it being a green space. Here, we wanted to start a, kind of a conversation that's grown over time and grown throughout the year about Martin's Pond, and obviously with all of the development going on around it, starting to look at amenities, benches, a boardwalk, how are people getting to the water? I mean, it's something that you don't really see a lot of in the downtown district. How are we actually incorporating any people to really kind of integrate that area into the public realm? So looking at boardwalks, we had conversations about native plantings, canopy planters, floating planters, different things to kind of make that an attraction, and if anything, kind of become a little bit of a bookend of the downtown district on that side, and entrance, a gateway, a threshold, a new identity for that area. So I'm going to hand it over to Logan.
Thanks, Carter. So our final proposal has to do with housing, and housing is interesting in Apopka. In many central Florida communities, there is a lack of affordable housing. And in Apopka, it's interesting because there's really a lack of maybe medium and high-income style housing. And during our survey, we surveyed folks, what kind of housing would you like to see in downtown? What would you like to live in? And our respondents came back and said they'd like to see more live-work units. Think of those. They also go by the name mixed-use, but sort of an old-style store where you live above the shop. Townhomes, which you see represented in the diagram here, are another popular way of living that's popular nationwide, actually, right now. But the goal is to have a mix of housing types, whether they're single-family houses or apartments, or duplexes or condos, and different sizes. Because when you have that mix of sizes, whether it's from studio to one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, it means that you're also going to have a mix of ages, and you're going to have a mix of incomes, and that makes a much healthier community. One of the other things we're proposing is a housing toolkit. This would take the form of a website that would be accessible to private developers, and it would be a way to show off a lot of the great resources you already have. You've got some great zoning codes in place right now. There's already several incentive programs. We want to make sure that people know about that. And so a toolkit could include things like a step-by-step guide, available parcel inventory. We saw earlier, there's a lot of vacant land in downtown Apopka right now. Grading scales for that site suitability, possible funding resources, not just government tax incentives, but also lining up private banks who are willing to help with that development. Common applications that a developer might need to use, and various incentives as well. So all those, and this is something that could evolve over time. So all these different programs that we've put together for you and run through the community workshops and getting the community surveys, they're not all new, but we hope that there's something that you can take and back up programs and ideas that maybe you're already working on and really inspire a refocus on downtown Apopka. You know, one of the main reasons we started this, this, just this little stretch of eight blocks on Highway 441, had 23 deaths within about a five-year period. And we want this area to be a place where people feel safe, living and working and playing in this area. It should be the heart of Apopka. It's the core of your city. It's your Main Street. And so we hope that the research and the work that we've done over the last seven months, you find helpful and useful, and we hope that private developers, I know there's some in the room, also look at that and take a second thought about developing in downtown Apopka. Thank you again for the opportunity. Are there any questions?
Commissioner Velazquez.
Wow. Well, you know, I first discovered you February at the Saturday Sounds, and then, of course, I followed afterwards. I really truly enjoyed when you had the public input on March 8th. I think we closed down the VFW. The commissioners were the last ones to leave. We were like, oh, and one more thing, and one more thing. I think it's a great presentation. The fact that you have spent so many months in our city and saw it from my point of view is, from some, from all of these, our students, they're very young, so it was a different view. And they're the ones that are kind of moving into these type of products. So it gave me a greater insight, and I just feel that we were able to kind of combine, you know, what some of us are looking for, you know, the older, much elder, and then the younger, and sort of having a vision, something for the future. Because I remember saying to you, it's not about five years from now, it's about 25 to 50 years. Is this sustainable? And because that's how we build. And so I was really impressed, and I, I do hope that our city staff does take some of these recommendations, you know, and kind of incorporate them as they, you know, allow these developers to come in to realize, well, how do we want to see downtown, City of Apopka? And I'm really looking forward to it. So I know after this is all done and graded, that we will get this.
That's right. Yes, you'll all get a full copy in a couple weeks.
And I really, it was really a great presentation, and when you opened it up to the public, it was even good for us to listen to some of our residents and some of the families that had just moved into Apopka. So it was really good to hear a perspective of what people wanted, want to see, what they hope to see, and what they want, how, for the City of Apopka to grow. So it was a good presentation and a good workshop. So thank you. And I got to spend time with the professor on the phone at home, and we started talking about everything from Puerto Rico to New York to, to everything, which was a good thing. So thank you, congratulations, and thank you for picking the City of Apopka to do this survey and, and this project. It means a lot to us, so thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. And the entire survey results will be part of our final product that we'll be sending to you.
Mr. Becker?
Yeah, great presentation. Very well put together. You know, it's always, it's always healthy to think about, to Commissioner Velazquez's point, our vision for the future, whether it's five years down the line, 10 years, more than likely, we have, we have such a community that's here for multi-generations, you have to think much longer term. But, you know, it's always good to talk about the art of the possible, which is what we saw here today. But what better gift to the students than to actually put something to reality? And so what you presented tonight, there's a lot of, unless you're coming with funding for it, which I doubt that you are, might be a little bit too large in scope to actually enact as, in reality, but there was one that hit me pretty, pretty hard tonight that seems like it's in the realm of possibility, right? And when you were talking about the pocket part, that really resonated with me. If you can go, can you go back to that slide, actually?
Sure.
And you're right, we all do know that building, at least up here on the dais. It's a city-owned building, and the tenant that's in there currently would benefit extremely by having what you've visioned for that piece of property right there. And it looks like you've got some mural potential, some, some sort of fern or something painted on the side there. Commissioner Moore just had a commissioned work done by Ms. Miller over off Votal and Thompson recently. Turned out just beautiful. But something to make that a reality, to say that this, this project was not done for simply a presentation, but something that could actually brought to life. You know, I'm looking at that, and that does not look terribly expensive to me from a capital expenditure perspective. We all have discretionary funds. I'm not sure how much Commissioner Moore spent on that mural, but I would think that it's, you know, doable. I would be interested if you all could work with staff to come up with a price tag for what that would, what that would entail. Because again, if residents can pass by that, and again, I think staff would, would like something like that. People that work here at City Hall could go over to that place of business, get, you know, some of the pastries that they serve there as well. So I would love to have that be your stamp on Apopka to say, hey, we did something here and we made it a reality.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Ashley Morissette, myself along with my teammates, Yumi. We designed these pocket parks. I do have some numbers for you.
Oh, great. Well, look at that. This was not planted, by the way.
So those are, those are going to be included in your pocket when you receive it. We're looking at a rough estimate before you do electricity and landscape irrigation. You're looking between $13,000 and $15,000. Again, with the landscaping, electricity, you're probably going to be a little bit more on the expensive side, although I wasn't really sure, for everything you see, including the leary oak and the blue days plants and the bike racks, three tables, and the waste receptacle. And I had spoken with somebody who said that the mural could be something that you guys partner with the high school, that there was a teacher that would be able to help you guys do something like that.
Well, we've got a resident muralist.
Okay, sorry, yeah. Also, those are great opportunities.
Has done two within the immediate area. I just, you know. It always strikes me of how much extracurricular and schooling that she does beyond her, her talent for artistry, so. But yeah, I mean, the concept is there. But again, you know, just to kind of put a bow on the, on the comments, it's just, you know, it's little things like this. What our residents want to see is not just, you know, talking about this, seeing a nice presentation, then nothing comes. It would be a real great win for staff and for this team to say, you know, 10 years from now, you're driving through Apopka and you say, we did that. And I think that would, and it, and it seems like it would be a value add for everybody involved in this, so. But great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
Well, I like the concept of that pocket park as well, and I think it'd be a great enhancement to, to our city. And as Commissioner Becker said, that those students will be able to come back and say, you know, that's one of our designs from a project and assignment that we had as students. $13,000, $15,000 doesn't sound like a whole lot of money, so, so maybe that is something that we could take a look at. Once you know, we also appreciate the fact that you did choose the City of Apopka, the greatest city in Orange County, to come and do your project and to give us some ideas and some things that we can do to enhance our community and make it a better place to live, work, and play.
Commissioner Nesta?
Thank you.
Yeah, let me just start by saying thank you so much. This is a really cool project. And you guys all graduate next month?
A lot of us.
Okay. Well, it would be who of us to not ask you to, please apply. Our community development director needs some, some help in his department. So please, feel free to apply and, and put a lot of this into action, because it would be pretty incredible to see this, and you guys already done the work, so why not get paid for it? So it's very cool. I also know, we have the planning commission too. I know they would be interested to hear this presentation as well, or I know that's extra work for you guys, but if you could send it out, once we do see it at some point, that would be very cool to see, just so everyone's on the same page and just kind of see what the vision for this area would be, I think would be very advantageous. I really liked the, the Martin's Pond, the pathway around that. I think that would be huge for that area once it starts getting built up. I think that would be very cool to do too. You guys did just so many cool ideas that it, this is, this is just, this is a huge value add for our city. So thank you so much, and we really appreciate you choosing Apopka. So thank you for being here.
Okay. Yeah. I tell you, the number of hours you all have put in on this is just amazing, and so Pam, you got?
I just wanted to close. I know that Carter works for Orange County, and I would just like to point out, his talents are being wasted there when he could come here, and y'all did such an amazing job, and we really enjoyed having you. And if you're looking, Dr. Santiago is their, kind of their leader. If y'all are looking for a capstone project, again, you know that there's a lot of work to be done here. And we, you know, you're welcome here.
Opportunities for improvement, not work to be done, opportunities for improvement.
Opportunities, yes. We have, we have opportunities and challenges here, and it was a great experience. I do want to tell you that the boardwalk, that is, has been my idea for, since City Center went in. So they just kind of put it out there. But thank you very, very much, all. You're all extremely talented, and I wish you well in your careers. And Commissioner Nesta is not just kidding around. We do have positions if anyone is interested in talking to us. Take opportunities when they present themselves. So thank you all very much.
Before y'all leave, what I'd like to do is get a picture of everybody, the whole group with the city commissioners here, and I've got a little something for y'all as, as your parting gift. Not, not worth the effort you put in, that's for sure, but a little token of our appreciation.
Job applications. There it is.
That direction.
Okay. Agenda review, Michael?
Just to make a note, there's a typo on item two of the consent agenda. It says approve the Ridge School Currency Mitigation Agreement. It's actually approved the Kelly Park School Mitigation Agreement. All the materials in your packet are correct. It's just, there's just a typo on the item on the language in the agenda.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Public comment. Susan?
Albert McKimmy?
Albert McKimmy, 3603 Golden Gem Road, Apopka. Today heralds the initiation of historic changes for the city of Apopka. So first, let's look at some previous changes and how they were accomplished. The documents I've provided you with today date back to December 19th of 2018. There's no trace in city records of these changes being made by referendum. The city clerk could confirm my search and that she searched, so I'm now faced with a dilemma. At a recent city meeting, when questioned by Kyle Becker, Michael Rodriguez specifically said change to the charter could only be made by referendum, not by ordinance. So what am I missing? The charter is a declaration of how the city applies governance to its residents. It should not be a document filled with confusion and contention. The fact that Brian Nelson allows Michael Rodriguez to continue to be involved in city business today is a testament to the fact that it does. Today, as we initiate a process that could lead to Brian Nelson, Sean Wyllam, and Michael Rodriguez no longer being employed by the city, we must not only question the integrity of their leadership, we must review the foundation on which it is built. There is no point in resolving a problem today if future leaders operate under a charter that is flawed. It is time to decide on a weak mayor, a strong mayor, a full-time position, or a part-time position. Those changes will require a referendum that will take in excess of 90 days, a similar timeline to that which we could be looking at to elect a new mayor. I've seen a copy of a charter review that is circulating, and members of the commission are also aware of its existence. The majority of the public are not. If a vote should be required to elect a new mayor, that is also when the charter should be amended. I request a workshop and charter review to allow the residents to be part of that process, to comment and to be educated in different aspects of the charter. In recent weeks, Commissioner Nesta has been highlighting what a few of us have been questioning for months. Brian Nelson transferred $31 million to one Florida bank to an account that did not provide an optimum interest or security to the city. Brian Nelson's business was forgiven a PPP loan by the same bank. It is alleged that Brian Nelson has financial interests with that bank. We believe that because of conflicts of interest and potential financial irregularities, we request the commission to have a forensic audit completed on city business with the bank that has transacted with, in which David Rankin has been involved, Mayor Nelson's former campaign advan, manager. Politicians and elected officials, officials are notorious for avoiding questions they later do not want to be held accountable for. And to be honest, our commissioners are required to be just as accountable as the mayor. It's not only the city records department that seem to be slow at providing public information. I now hear murmurs, murmurs that our commissioners are not always being forthcoming on their positions. Accountability is for all. And whilst we unconditionally support Mike Duran and his family's fight for justice, it requires to be resolved now. There are other issues with the proliferations of developments that also require the attention of our commissioners. I asked our commissioners a question back in December regarding their position on development. That still remains unanswered. Thank you.
Dennis New?
Dennis New, 105 West Magnolia Street. Tonight, I also represent a nonpartisan political action group named Apopka Citizens for Honest Government Incorporated. It's been established and filed with the city, the state, and the IRS. Good evening. For over the last year and a half, I've been to every council meeting here. I've come to realize that many subjects have been broached in disgust. If the mayor agrees with the subject matter, the time limits are ignored. If he does not, the microphone is cut off at four minutes. Ask yourself, why is it only certain people get to use the First Amendment for free speech and others don't? It's also peculiar that several people have spoken about the homeless situation, and nothing was done until a friend of the mayor's wife spoke about an issue near the pedestrian walkway and human waste. Same situation with a noise ordinance. On more than one occasion, people have questioned the lack of a noise ordinance. But when the mayor's friend and political supporter had issues and spoke, a new ordinance was written, and the mayor even named it after his friend. Ask yourself why only certain issues are addressed by the mayor. Ask yourself why $30 million of taxpayer money was in a bank paying little interest and costing the city taxpayers approximately $40,000 a month, until Commissioner Nesta took on the challenge. Ask yourself why the mayor fails the city in the management and corrections needed at the fire department since the death of Austin Duran. During the last city council meeting, a majority of the council voted to end the attorney's employment as stated in the charter. Mayor Nelson said in an interview on TV, it was a ceremonial vote. Truth be told, it was against his will. He didn't like it, and he won't accept it. Just like other issues he's against, no one, not one person in this city, elected him to be supreme ruler. He was elected to be mayor and represent the people, the chair of the council, the supposed leader of the city, but not the ruler. His blatant disregard for the charter on more than one occasion has led us to save the city from tyranny. Starting tonight, with the first signature after this meeting, the recall process petition will begin. In accordance with Florida Statute 100 dot 361, we welcome any and all voting citizens of Apopka to sign the petition and save this city.
All right. No more clapping. This, we're, we're gonna hold, I'm gonna hold you to the, to the decorum rule.
Kelly Butcher.
Deputy Chief, just, you keep an eye, please, sir, for me.
Kelly Butcher, Clemmer Sorrento Road. Good evening, Commissioners, and Nelson, you too. On February the 16th of 2023, I sent an email to the city of attorney, Michael Rodriguez, calling for his resignation due to multiple lies, misrepresentation, and handling of city affairs. I received an email back from Mayor Brian Nelson in regards to the email, which asked me to spell out in detail the multiple lies and misrepresentations and mishandling of city affairs by Michael Rodriguez. He also asked for a timely response to the very serious allegations with far-reaching implications. But his response was not the only response I got. I also received a forwarded email from Michael Rodriguez to Edward Bass, then to Nelson, that stated, seriously, we have to deal with this crap. Those were the forwarded words to Mayor Nelson from Michael Rodriguez. On February the 19th, I received an apology email from Nick Nesta for the way that I was treated and disrespected by a city employee. It is also mentioned in the city council meeting where Commissioner Mausta referenced it in a meeting on March the 1st of 2023. Mr. Nesta felt that I was entitled to an apology. Mr. Rodriguez owed, made, made one half-heartedly. But the real issue here is Mr. Nelson, what you had to say. Mr. Nelson also tried to lay blame that it was him that had said those words, which in fact, it was not. I quote it, and I quote, he stated, "I would not do that. That statement does not deserve a response." When is it okay to publicly disrespect a member of the community, not only by email, but by public forum? Mr. Nelson, I stand before you here tonight, face to face, and I dare you to tell me, a member of the community, and a female, tell me that I do not deserve an apology. Go ahead, tell me.
Okay, next up?
I still have some time to wait for my apology. Tell me to my face I don't deserve an apology.
Thank you, Ms. Butcher. Sit down, please.
Hi, Serena.
No, hand these out.
Okay.
Yeah, let me just hand those up.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, Mike Duran, Claremont. Our mayor seems confused on a sand trailer that killed Apopka firefighter, Austin Duran, my son.
Talk about one trailer. Okay, one sand trailer that was, went through four fire chiefs was never, ever taken out of service. So if it was so dangerous, why didn't somebody say, hey, you know, fire chief, why don't you take it out of place?
Then I also asked Chief Carnaselli years back if we could stop using it because of the danger, and he said yes.
Why do you think it's important to keep the fire chief in his position, given the three commissioners who voted no confidence?
I think he's, he's done a good job.
I asked the mayor if employees would have been properly trained. Does he think firefighter Austin Duran's death would have been prevented? He did not give me a straight answer, but continued to say the trailer should have never been in use.
I would have told everyone who working the night before Austin's accident was not happy with the sand trailer going back in service. And the senior people told the new kids at the kitchen table, do not use that trailer, no matter who calls for it, unless there is a senior person around to help. That trailer can kill you. That is a fact that was said.
Mayor Brian Nelson kept repeating that it should have never been in use, but he didn't say why it was there in the first place and why firefighters had access to it if they were not properly trained.
Trailer should have been, never been in, in, in service.
The firefighters voted 85% no confidence in their fire chief. All four commissioners either voted no confidence or that a change manager was a must for the fire department to move forward toward foundational and culture changes. Because of that, an estimated cost and RFP was requested by this council for the purpose of hiring a change manager. However, that is not how the RFP was written. I am sure you have all noticed. It seems to be written to waste time and taxpayer dollars by hiring another consultant to quote verification of implementation of key recommendations provided by a recent health and safety study performed by, performed by a third party. That third party was Gannon Services. Cancel this RFP. It is not the will of the four commissioners, and it is not the will of 85% of our firefighters. The city continues to interfere, tamper, and attempt to stack the deck in order to save our fire chief, Sean Wyllam. I would challenge Sean Wy, Sean Wyllam to name our 14 firefighters and name the person assigned to that firefighter as a mentor. I would love to hear that these mentors have been assigned to our newly hired men and women. Last I checked, that has not happened. The city attorney appears to be working solely as the mayor's personal attorney, willfully withholding full truth when posing a hired position to work at the pleasure of the city council, all five members, not just the mayor. Three commissioners voted that they do not trust this city attorney, that he does not have the best interests of this city in mind. Please pay close attention to consent item number 10 tonight. It is asked to sole source two vendors that break the threshold of the $50,000 procurement, total of $125,000. $60,000, which is to clean the bunker gear for the fire department, which I want to remind you was a initiative by Gannon, not Wyllam. While sole sourcing, searching may not be the best suggestion, in place of this RFP to assign Gannon, it should be requested, change, requested change manager position, what should be considered as is an invaluable source. They've already done the work. Why pay, waste more taxpayer dollars to do the job twice?
Thank you, Mr. Duran.
It isn't listed in the Florida statute, like the city attorney likes to appropriately reference, 287 point 057 under section one, bullet point four. It says the lowest responsive bid should be awarded. It would be cost-effective to have Gannon come in onboard to this department.
They have already done the work.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Duran.
We must ratify the proper and experienced people in these positions. If possible, unratify those that have failed. Mr. Mayor, this is not just about one trailer. This is not just an accident. Again, you have shown
Our side, our family, the fire department, that the loss of life means very little to you. Cancel this RFP for the fire department, as it is a ploy to keep the incapable Sean Wyllam at the helm of this stunk vessel.
Ace Woodham.
Ace Woodham, 47 East Magnolia Street, Apopka, Florida, 32703. I wasn't going to speak tonight. I was going to donate my four minutes to Mr. Duran. But I say, we, as one of the only city municipalities local, I can't give up my four minutes. So I'm coming up here to aggravate the dog poo out of you. Another reason is because we've got one arrogant son of a gun sitting in the middle of the four of y'all. Brian, I can't believe you. It'd be so easy to fix this problem, sir.
You could talk to the, the council as a whole.
I am talking to the whole council.
The council, the council as a whole.
Well, why didn't the whole council get the vote count? They put this man out, and he's sitting here collecting $4,000 a week.
The council, you're not.
Sorry, council. Forgive me again. I hope you say forgive me, because you
The council as a whole.
Council has been screwed up. All right. The citizens of Apopka voted as council in place. The citizens of Apopka have spoken. But we have been very well misled. We've got no representation from the council, or part of the council, as a whole. I feel so stupid standing here. I feel so stupid standing here talking to the council, which is one problem with the council. But anyway, I can't believe it, guys. This could have been ended months ago, months ago, and it's going to go on. Sean Wyllam does not hire have the qualifications as a leader in our fire department. Once again, I'll say it again for 110th time. Sean was a good firefighter, probably still is. But for some reason, he's got something on one of our council, because man has no he has no representation in fire department. We've got a major call, he doesn't show up. Alex Kepner, thank God, he's moving the fire department forward. They're training. The guys are happy to get about training. They still feel the same way about their fire chief. They need help over there, and none of y'all can do it. You look at me every time I come, we get no response until now. I'm not allowed to clap, wink, burp, I guess. But it's ridiculous. This could have never got this far, never. Yeah, I'm gonna stand here and take my whole four minutes if I talk in circles. But they're mine. And I don't look no more stupid than you do. So we can keep on and on, and I'll be here next time. But people, please help these guys out, these girls. They're professional firefighters. All they're asking for is a leadership. They're not asking for raises. And we y'all finally put the third firefighter riding backwards on the engine after the death of a firefighter. And they've been asking for that for a long time, and y'all act like y'all glorified name by doing it. That trailer's been was built in the early 80s by Bobby Collins, a couple of brothers of us. It was designed and stuff for a special reason. As far as I know, I thought the thing was in the museum or something. I thought it was gone. And so, yes, whoever said take it back, y'all, that was the stupidest damn move they ever made. Thank you.
Norrette Turan.
Good evening, council. Norrette Turan, former general employee, Public Services Department, Design Engineering Division. The last time I addressed this council, I alluded to one man's recklessness being the instrument of my termination. In my eight and a half years of service, I have worked for five directors, two interim directors, one acting director, and even a period of autopilot in the Public Services Department. It is only this current director that has abused his real and perceived authority to transform public services into a hostile into an intolerable hostile workplace. It is this current director that has jeopardized my qualification for pension. The expectation of every dedicated employee is that their years of service to this community will earn them the pension that is still pales in comparison to police and fire pensions. But never did I think, never could I imagine, that the general employees would be discriminated and divided and conquered from within, just as the current director is tirelessly attempting to do. This policy manual, provided to me along with my employee badge eight and a half years ago, has been ignored, disregarded, essentially rendered worthless paper. Why? Is it the city attorneys? Is the city attorney to blame? Perhaps. From what I've seen, from what I've heard? Perhaps. It's human resources to blame. Perhaps. From what I've seen, from what I've heard? As a public servant? Sorry. Are public servants not worthy of fair and equal treatment as provided by these rules and regulations? What is the status of my rebuttal to termination? Clearly, I put more thought and effort into my rebuttal than the director did himself in the decision to terminate. All these years, I have defended and advised the city in matters applicable to my knowledge and experience as a as a professional civil engineer. And even when my authority allowed, I administered fair and equal treatment to the public, to contractors, to consultants. Why? Because there is one rule a public servant will never break, will never ignore, will never disregard, and that's the golden rule. So will you defend the employee? Will you protect the employee from clear and present dangers? Will you put an end to discrimination, harassment, intimidation, manipulation, unbecoming conduct, and of course retaliation? I implore you, council, to show respect for your employees, which I truly believe are your greatest resource. And I'll leave you with a quote from Billy Graham. It says courage is contagious. When a brave man when a brave man takes a stand, the spine of others is stiffened. Thank you.
Reverend Alex Robinson.
Good evenings. My name is Alex Robinson. I live at 1997 Meadowcrest Drive in Apopka, Florida. I want to come back and thank you so much, mayor and council, for all the work that you've done. I think you're doing a fantastic job and when the way you did the sidewalk for me, for the community off of Rogers Road. As I came before constantly asking, I told you I would be back to thank you. And I thank you guys so much. And know that God has a place for both of you, all of you, that he's doing a fantastic job, and you were appointed here. So thank you so much for the work that you're doing.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you coming.
Megan Garcia.
Thank you. Thank you. Hello. Megan Garcia, Apopka. Okay, try to stay in that four-minute window. During the March 15th city council meeting, our mayor mentioned that Mr. Robert Bob Spencer was hired approximately 18 months ago to, in simple terms, assist Apopka's fire chief to communicate better. Eyebrows were raised with this revelation, and as a naturally curious person, I began looking into this individual and his company known as the Institute for Human Development, Inc. After a quick Google search that provided nothing of substance to whom Mr. Spencer was nor what his company set out to provide to the world, I reached out to our city's clerk, who I would argue has the hardest job in the city right now, to obtain more information on Mr. Spencer through public records request. I made requests for the contract mentioned on March 15th on that city council meeting, mayor, where you mentioned this. And fortunately, Ms. Susan came up with nothing for me. In fact, the only thing that I received, or that she received, were documents to her from HR, or those two proposal documents submitted fall of 2021. The first half handwritten document, which you guys have, was accepted through the city featuring a program entitled Enhancing Customer Service, was approved by Apopka's Parks and Rec Department at the cost of $1,200. I mention this because the mayor positioned Mr. Spencer, as mentioned in that meeting, as if he was hired as a communication coach by HR, when in fact, Mr. Spencer was originally hired by Mr. Brian Foreman of Parks and Rec for the purpose of customer service training. Through a budget record, our city clerk was also additionally able to track down for me, I discovered that it wasn't until April 13th of 2022 that Mr. Spencer first billed the HR department specifically for leadership training and executive leadership training. You guys also have a copy of that. This is where my research gets interesting. As you can see in the document I handed to you, it's the last one in that packet there. There are two large sums under the HR, under HR, that according to our city's purchasing policy would fall under either level two or level three purchasing methods, where either two or three written quotes are required ahead of approval of cost. As of today, I've not been able to track that down, but I do plan to continue to look for those documents. Without discrediting Mr. Spencer, as of now, I have been unable to find a website to offer any insight or idea on the goals or aspirations of his company. Speaking in the context of supporting our fire chief and considering he has taken a large amount of the criticism over the last nine months that the mayor attributed to Chief Wyllam's communication skills, I want to ensure that the person or institute we put in charge of assisting our chief in his personal and professional growth has the best possible qualifications. Additionally, as a taxpayer, I would like to know that this administration is following the agreed upon purchasing policy. To reiterate, I do not hold Mr. Spencer accountable at all to what seems to be a fumbling of the ball yet again by this administration with this new level of lip service. In closing, I want to encourage the public to get involved in this process. I know a handful of characters online, including the mayor, have accused members of our community of bashing the administration and would rather leave well enough alone. It is my belief, though, that far too often those in power depend on that same apathy that our that our government is run and on how our government is run. It is also my belief that education, I've learned that through my mentors, is the strongest defense in how we as citizens hold our leadership accountable. Again, you all are elected by the people for the people, not for the chair. Thank you so much.
Russ Beamer.
Good evening. I'm Russ Beamer. I am not an Apopka resident, but I'm here on behalf of Pam Weber, I'm sorry, Pam Welker, who is an Apopka resident. It was interesting being here tonight. I have to say it's a very passionate community, and what I'm going to talk about is an opportunity for collaboration that's going to benefit the community. I am the executive director of HomeAid Orlando, which is a nonprofit that works in service to other nonprofits like Pam's organization, The Ark. And we want to help. Our mission is to end homelessness through construction, community outreach, and education. And homelessness is all around us. We know it's a problem. We've heard about it enough. I don't have the time to get into it, but you know that most of our community is struggling a paycheck away from being homeless, and there's a large percentage of people who will sleep under no roof tonight. And there are people in the community who are working tirelessly to help them. And Pam's organization has cobbled together resources in the community and is dealing with that process every day. I come here with the opportunity, and I hope that before I finish, you'll see the opportunity to collaborate and help a group of people that want to help Pam and that affiliation that she's got in the community. So HomeAid is an organization that has done, and you've got an information packet in front of you, I hope you get a chance to look at it later tonight. But we've done in Orlando, in the three years that we've been in existence, we've done over $1 million of direct construction benefit for homeless service agencies that are helping our community. We have consulted and supported nearly $2 million of additional projects, some of which are exactly like the dream that Pam has for this community. So we have experience in delivering those projects. But HomeAid Orlando is part of a larger organization, HomeAid America, that in 20 cities across the country for the last 30 years has built over 1,000 projects worth $350 million. So we have a lot of experience in homeless service support, and we're asking for your support to help take on a project with her that will bring a resource center to Apopka that can unite all the agencies that are today working piecemeal to support the needs of the people in the community. So HomeAid brings the home building industry and the resources that can help produce those facilities. You'll see in the brochure, it talks a little bit more about that. But I work with some of the largest builders in central Florida and across the country. We work with the largest builders in America. And then we have a whole support network of affiliated companies and other interested members of the community that support us in helping us get that done. So what I'm asking for from the commission here is the the opportunity to open doors and collaborate within the community resources that you have. It was very interesting hearing the UC presentation and the opportunity for vacant parcels throughout the community, or perhaps discretionary spending or budgets that exist today that may help fuel the resources to get this built. So I'm asking you to consider that collaboration that we can go forward with and create a better community that will benefit everyone. So thank you.
Thank you for coming out. Appreciate it.
Christopher Rodriguez.
Christopher Rodriguez, 2729 Maitland Crossing Way. I have some concerns regarding the questions asked during the Zoom meeting for the RFP and commissioners. You were all sent this. Question number eight asks, did Sean Wyllam confirm that the RFP is not to hire a change manager? And the city responded and confirmed that this RFP, the RFP is not. This leads me to question number nine, which asks, why did the city send out an RFP for the Apopka Fire Department searching for a consultant? All four commissioners asked for a change manager, and one of the commissioners specifically told Sean Wyllam that it can't be you. The city attorney then interjected and said, due to the amount that was said, it is above the $50,000 threshold, and we need to go through the procurement process. And we were all in agreeance. We made that happen. So this RFP was created and worded that this is for the hiring of a consultant company, not a change manager. The city also replied that we didn't vote for a change manager. I wasn't aware that we needed to vote. So if we didn't vote for a change manager, then why did we have to go through the procurement process? And yet alone, who voted to hire a consultant? We don't need a babysitter to make sure Wyllam does his job. That's what this RFP is basically asking for, in my opinion, a babysitter. Throw away this RFP and hire Gannon as an evaluated source. Just one other question. Who approved and submitted this ridiculous RFP? They obviously were not at the meeting. I know the commissioners didn't approve it because it's not what they discuss. I hope I get an answer tonight. Thank you.
That's it? Okay. Thank you. All right. We have 11 consent agenda items. Does anybody need to pull any of them? If not, look for a motion to approve the 11 consent items.
Number seven, I just need to pull, if that's okay. I just need a little more time on that.
Okay.
And number 10. I mean, it was brought up, and I would plan on pulling it anyways, but on the evaluated source, there was no backup material to indicate why they would be considered evaluated sources. Lowe's just says, like, basic supplies or something to that effect. I'm assuming if it's just normal supplies, why wouldn't Lowe's be considered an evaluated source?
Oh, you want to come down, Blanche? Talking about item 10, Lowe's and
The two items before you under item 10 were approved as evaluated sources by the city administrator. Under the 50K, they're now exceeding the 50K, and that requires the council authority to exceed the $50,000.
No, I get the mechanics of it. I just didn't understand.
The purpose.
There's no material in there because it just it's very generic in its wording in terms of what that expenditure is before. It says parts and supplies.
Right. Fire deck is parts that are used by the fire department. They need to go up to 60K. That would be the last use of those because we did break before you last month, the last council meeting, another vendor, PPE. council meeting, another vendor, PPE, that they're going to be using going forward. This is the last use of fire deck, and they're the only ones that can provide that service.
Yeah, but in terms of Lowe's?
And Lowe's is just routine supplies. Hold on, trying to get to that one.
If you want, we can just, we can pull that item, and then we can just get a list of all the things we purchased.
You want to know of everything we purchased from Lowe's?
Well, I'm just saying, because an evaluated source would suggest that, like, Home Depot wouldn't be able to provide the same thing, or Ace Hardware wouldn't be able to provide the same thing. I just don't understand why we would put Lowe's as a part and supplies as an evaluated source. Again, you're opening things up to broad interpretation here.
Okay.
But yeah, the first part of it, it's fine. I would go to strike Lowe's from that.
Okay.
Okay. So, fire decks, we're going to move forward. You need more information on Lowe's.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Any other items? If not, look for a motion to approve items 1 through 6, 8, 9, 10, with the exception of Lowe's, and number 11.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta. Second. Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor, aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Jim Hitt.
You gave me one. You gave me that. No, no. You gave it to me at the agenda review.
It's a little tall for me. We had a, Jim Hitt, Community Development Director. We had a recent vacancy on the Planning Commission Board from Linda Lorendt. She had faithfully served on that board for, gosh, 10, 12 years, I think it was.
Eight years. How long is eight?
It seemed longer. I think since I met her, you know, like, 25, 30 years ago, and it seems like I've known her, well, a long time. Anyway, we have an application from Eric Mock, who is one of our local realtors, and he does live, obviously, in the city over in the southern portion of the city. The map, if you want a larger map, I can get that to you. This one just fit easy with paper clips. But he has been in central Florida for 29 years. He's, you know, with the work experience, he's got 31 years for long-term healthcare administration and three and a half years as a realtor. He's participated in the Chamber of Commerce meetings and in tours with the development community that we actually put out about a year ago. He is also a Chamber of Commerce member and Chair of the Elder Affairs Committee. He's involved in the city. That's the good part, that I appreciate, knowing the city as he does as a realtor. I think that's a good value for the Planning Commission Board. He has been attending those. He attends DRC every once in a while, and basically, I recommended this person to the mayor for that open spot on the Planning Commission.
Any questions for Jim?
I mean, I definitely know Mr. Eric Mock for the last couple of years, and he is an outstanding resident. The only thing I just want to ask, did we have other residents who may have submitted for that, for the planning and zoning? Was there consideration?
I know of one other person, but they weren't as involved with the community or with the city as Mr. Mock was.
And I did, I mean, something separate, and I hope that you were able to get me an answer, that we, there is one member on the P&amp;Z that I had mentioned to you that, you know, I just wanted to find out their attendance.
Oh, yes, yeah. I've got to get that for you yet. I did mention it to Ms. Arnold, and she's got to compile all that.
Right, because many times I've tuned into P&amp;Z, and there's six members, and there should be seven.
Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions for Jim?
I just have a couple comments. I appreciate the math. It's inaccurate, but it's a math, because one shows Mr. Green's house, no longer on that commission, and Mr. Doomey is not on there either. But either way, the map is helpful, and I understand the point of it, but it's not in our code to select members that are equally spaced throughout the community.
No, no.
I know that's the point of that, this map, but that's not within our code. And what I do like about Mr. Mock is that he, what is in our code, it specifically says to have somebody within the real estate industry, which we have not had anybody on
Exactly.
that commission for as long as I've been attending those meetings. So, that's nice to have that added in there for sure, so.
I'll get the map corrected. My goal was to make sure he was actually on that for the location. I apologize for that.
No, no, and it's fine. It's just, again, unless we're going to put it in the code that we have to be spaced out perfectly, or that we can't be in districts or something.
Yeah.
I appreciate the map, but it doesn't do anything for us, so.
Yeah, we're looking for the diversity on the board itself versus location on map.
Sure. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? Not will close the public hearing. Look for a motion to authorize the appointment of Eric Mock to the Planning Commission for a three-year term.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velasquez. All those in favor, aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up.
Well, he's here, Mr. Eric Mock.
See you in a few weeks.
I know.
So, can we just introduce him?
You want to?
Absolutely.
For those that don't know, sure, come on up, Eric Mock.
Oh, hold on, let me put this at its highest.
Yeah, you need to get him. There we go.
I just want to know who's taller, you or Commissioner Beck?
Eric Mock.
Bringing up a little, is that the highest?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wow.
Eric Mock, 2439 Birdie View Drive here in Apopka, which is just west of the new Advent Health Apopka Hospital. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve the community and the city of Apopka and the residents that are here in this community. I have enjoyed immensely the time that I have been involved here in the city since actually running for this commission and not prevailing against a very good man here, Nick Nesta. But I feel strongly about real estate and the ability for everyone to be able to achieve the American dream. I was asked that question very early in my career, and I thought about that, and to help people achieve that dream is extremely satisfying to me, and I hope to carry that forward to the people here in Apopka.
Thank you, Eric. Appreciate it.
Welcome, Eric.
Thank you for your service.
Okay. Ordinance number 2998.
Ordinance number 2998. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from county rural to industrial for certain real property generally located on the southwest corner of Peterson Road and State Road 429, owned by Central Florida Expressway Authority, comprising 6.0 acres, more or less, providing for severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Any changes?
No changes.
All right. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public.
It's not a plant. This is just a land use and rezoning.
There's nothing up here.
I'm sorry. Got it?
Yeah. All right. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? Not will close the public hearing. Look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2998.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor, aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2999.
Ordinance number 2999. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from County A1 Citrus Rural District to IL Light Industrial for certain real property generally located on the southwest corner of Peterson Road and State Road 429, comprising 6 acres more or less, and owned by Central Florida Expressway Authority, providing for severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Any changes, Jim?
No changes.
Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing. Look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2999.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor, aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 3001.
Ordinance number 3001. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending Chapter 22, Article 3, Sections 22 through 48, intent and purpose of Article 22-50, definitions in 22-54 rate schedule of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Apopka relating to road impact fees, providing for severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Pam Richmond, Community Development. I'm going to ask you tonight to allow us to update our transportation impact fees. The city first established impact fees in 1991, when the population of the city was approximately 14,000 people. The impact fee rate for a single-family home was $979.30. The first impact fee update was conducted in 2006, when the population increased to approximately 33,000. The impact fee rate for a single-family home at that time tripled to what it is now, which is about $11,000, or, I'm sorry, $3,000 per single-family home. Now, the city's population is at about 57,000. The area within the city's jurisdictional boundary has gone from 24 square miles in 2004 to about 35 square miles now. The economy has been up and down and up since impact fees were updated. Given the continuing growth, the need for additional infrastructure, and significant increase in construction costs, it's time to update the transportation impact fees. Impact fees are a one-time fee collected from new development to cover the proportionate share of the cost of providing additional infrastructure available for use by new growth. This is a consumption-based approach and a standard methodology for determining impact fee rates. Noteworthy, impact fees are not to be used for existing deficiencies and only for capital improvement, so infrastructure repair, like resurfacing, is not an allowable use. Impact fees are calculated using data from different sources. The trip generation data is usually from the IT Trip Generation Manual. Trip length, percent new trips, and construction costs come from recent projects or studies in the city or the county. Trip generation, percent new trips, and roadway costs per lane mile are the three biggest factors for the rates. Credit variables have some impact and are required by Florida statute to be included in the fee calculation, but have a smaller impact on the rate calculation. We started the process in 2020 and stopped when Florida law changed, making it almost impossible for us to increase the fees as much as we need to. The 2021 law allowed us to do a demonstrated need study that would allow us to raise the fees more than 50% over four years. Our study was completed, and we held the required public workshops to gather input for our justification. Those were held last week. In total, two members of the public attended, and we did have three council members attend the first meeting and one attend the second. Thank you, Commissioner Smith. The update and demonstrated need study workshops were heavily advertised on social media, in the paper, and through email blasts that I sent to every developer and land use attorney that I know of, and asked them to spread the word, any that have done business in the city within the last several years. I did receive one comment from a developer about the increase of quality restaurant, which is going from $11,000 per thousand square feet to around $30,000 per thousand square feet. And in this case, I'm going to use that as an example. It may seem like an extreme increase, but it's really not. I sent to y'all previously, I sent you the comparative analysis, I sent you an analysis of existing to future, and you will see that we're right in line with Orange County. A lot of our data came from Orange County road costs, trip lengths, et cetera. So, even though this may seem like an extreme increase, but considering the last time fees for quality restaurant was calculated, the percent new trip used was 38%. In this study, we used 77%, because it was documented at 77%. And of course, construction costs have quadrupled across the board over the last three or four years, and this includes planning, design, and rideaway also. Sorry. Staff believes the demonstrated need has been satisfied and that the request to update the city's transportation impact fees are well justified. With our present and future roadway capacity needs, the existing impact fees will never allow the city to provide roadway infrastructure. Therefore, I'm asking you to accept the first reading of ordinance number 3001 and hold it over second reading on adoption on May 3rd. Once adopted, the new impact fees will become effective on July 1st, 2023, and the law requires that the impact fees be adopted by two-thirds, which means four of the five have to vote to adopt the impact fees. And I am happy to answer questions. My consultant is not here tonight, and he has the, some of the more complicated details of the calculations, but I have a good working knowledge.
Any questions for Pam?
I had a couple. You had said that, I guess, who else came to the second meeting?
Phil Martinez showed up and one of our friends from Pulte Homes.
Okay. Did they have any feedback?
We had a back and forth, nothing positive or negative. They were just mostly there for, you know, to hear what we had to say. The representative from Pulte Homes had a concern that, even though I've been saying this for over a year, that we're updating, that they hadn't built that into some of their plans. But these impact fees won't be effective until July 1st.
Okay. I had gotten similar feedback of kind of their underwriting changed once we did this, which is fine, we need to do this, it should have been done a long time ago.
Yes, sir.
Which is why a lot of our infrastructure is the way it is. But are we with the, we limit the amount of permits per day to eight?
I think so. That's the building department. I think that was a rule that was established.
Okay.
I'm sorry, repeat that question?
So, well, Jim.
Each of, because we have multiple developments going on, the building department has limited the number of single-family permits in at a time from each of the builders, or each of the subdivisions, not builders, to 10 at a time.
10.
So, that way, we can turn these over a little bit faster. Usually, it takes about two to three weeks or so to get those turned out. Sometimes a little bit longer, just depends on how many they actually bring in. And then, once they pick up 10, they can drop off 10 the same day.
So, it's not per day? It's, once we approve 10, then you can put 10 more in?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Yeah, if it was per day, they'd have, you know, like, 10 per day times, you know, like...
Every community.
20, yeah.
So, I guess that's, we were getting pushback on that, or at least I was getting pushback on that of the properties that were already approved, but permits haven't been pulled yet. To what extent can we help them out? I guess, again, they've gone through their processes, they got their debt secured, all those things, and now we're changing a little bit. Again, it's to our benefit, we need to do this, but how do we ensure that they also have a successful project as well?
Everything that's in the queue now, they have plenty of time. A lot of them do. I haven't heard from really anyone, except for the one or the two, that they have concerns. You know, I don't know what to say about that. The impact fees need to go up, and we have to have a cutoff point. Everything that they get in on June 30th is with the old rates. Everything that comes on July 1st, you have options. I don't like any of them, but you could say, for a certain amount of time, charge at 75% of the fees. That doesn't get us where we need to be. And I will tell you again that this was advertised. I've been very vocal about this, and I feel like I've talked to most of the people who have some concerns. They've known about this. concerns. They've known about this. So I don't know that it's that much of a hardship. We're right in line with Orange County, and Orange County's impact fees really aren't high if you look across the state.
Okay. Is there, so they, I did get a couple of calls from different builders, and I understand their issues. It's not, hey, if our project's next year, they want to change it. It's, we're building actively right now, but we're limited by the capacity of the city. And so that's delaying their project and then costing them more in the long run. So they brought up an opportunity to possibly pay for extra staffing. They would rather meet the current impact fees and then pay for temporary staffing to help get permits through. So I don't know if that's an option, if that's something you'd be open to?
Not that it's any of my business, but the building department is the only department in the city that's fully staffed.
Okay. Fully staffed to whose?
To, I guess, to every position's full.
Okay.
Filled. There are options, though. I know that there are actually cities that outsource their whole building department. So I know that that is something that would be available to us. Could we get some people in here that fast? I couldn't say.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Well, I support the increase in impact fees. After joining the council, I attended several impact workshops. And three years ago, I came back to city council and suggested then that we needed to increase our impact fees in order that we were more in line with the neighboring communities, and also that we was able to beat, meet the foot the bill that it was causing from the impact that these builders are having on the city of Apopka. So I, I understand where the builders are coming from, but we also have an obligation to our citizens in order to make sure that we have the infrastructure in place, and we can't do that without the funds.
Commissioner Smith, we did talk about a mobility fee, too. And I think when we update the next time, that's an option. But the difference between the mobility fee and the transportation impact fee is, we just need some roadway capacity. We need the things that are defined under transportation impact fee projects. That's what we need now. And once we get some of those knocked out, then a mobility fee might be an option for us. And yes, I wish that I'd done this before, but we were on the, almost ready to come to council when the law changed, and I had to wait and see what others were going to do, and then we had to do the additional study.
And we're not sure. There's a law out there pending right now that could, that could impact.
Got my fingers crossed. I don't know. When will we know if it's dead?
Yeah.
Soon?
Nope. May the 1st, Friday in May.
Yeah, which is another reason that I'm pushing a deadline. This is something that just popped out of nowhere. And what it does is it takes away our opportunity to do this, the needs analysis. And then, our update would, we would be limited to spread out over four years, only 50%. And if you saw on our sheet, some of our impact fees, a few of them went down, but some of them doubled and tripled. And we just, that just brings us in line with the rest of the area that's updated.
So if that bill passes, would this be more ceremonial then?
If that bill passes? No, because my fervent hope is that you will approve this at the next reading, and then we finish our 90-day waiting period, and it would go into effect July 1, and we're already adopted, so it doesn't affect us.
Gotcha. Thank you.
But, but they, they can, they could do it on, on
They could. They did it last time.
Not, at the signing of the governor, they could do it effective immediately. So
That's what they did last time. Everybody rushed to get their stuff adopted, and the governor changed it and made it retroactive to January 1. I'm hoping he doesn't make that mistake again, but I don't have a crystal ball on that.
Yeah. We'll keep you posted. Mr. Becker? Mr. Velasquez?
No. I appreciate, because I showed up for the workshop, and it was informative. And I definitely support the increase of the impact fees, because we are growing, and they are impacting our community. And it's only fair that they pay for the impact and not, and that we're not putting it on the residents that are already here. So I do support this.
I mean, one of the things you want to make clear about what, how, where the money gets spent, just so that the public knows, Pam, just
The impact fees can only be used on capacity projects.
As in?
Things like road widening, and that's defined in different ways. Adding, making intersection improvements, be that install a signal, turn lanes. I can use the money to build new sidewalks. What I can't do is I can't resurface roads, and I can't repair sidewalks, nothing repair, anything that, that can be considered capacity. And I'll give you another example. I have done, I've rebuilt some roads by adding about four-foot of pavement to the road, because when you even widen the lanes a little bit, you actually increase the capacity. So that makes it an eligible project. That's what we just did out there on Peterson and King. That was perfectly eligible. But what I can't do is if the sidewalk's cracked, and we all know it needs to be fixed, and public services has spent all their money fixing other things, you can't take the money in my sidewalk line of impact fees and fix the sidewalk. We have, impact fees have gone up. If you're interested in how much we've been collecting, in 20, let's see, I pulled 20, in fiscal year 1920, our impact fees were about $2.7 million. In fiscal year 2021, our impact fees, transportation, were around $4 million. I guess I should have started with, let's see, this is 2122. We collected about $12 million in impact fees. And that, that increase was because of all that industrial development that we had up there. Had we adopted the impact fees before, that number would have been much less, because industrial impact fees are going down a little bit. And then, so far this year, we've collected about $7 million in impact fee. And y'all all know how much development is going through. It's really the best time to do it. We did all that industrial development, and now we have all this residential. You saw on the list, single-family is going from $3,100 to $8,000, $9,000, or $10,000, depending on house size. That's something that y'all can think about if you want to change. Before, we just had one category for single-family houses. But we've broken it out into three. It was suggested to me by someone that we might want to not do it that way. We might want to just have one category, because builders might come in and just, because of impact fees, build a lot of small houses. But my research and experience tells me that when builders are building, they're not thinking about the impact fees. And it just is not a big factor. They're going to pass that fee on probably anyway. There was one other thing that I wanted to share with you that, so you understand that, when they did the study before, a mile of roadway was around, a little over $1 million, $1.1 million. That was what was calculated. In this study, a mile of roadway is $4.5 million. So, and I think that it's even a little low, but I don't think that we want our impact fees to go, we don't want to be the highest. I mean, we want to be just below Orange County.
Is there an opportunity? I mean, I would think there is. Once this, should this pass, are we able to forecast the next two, three years of our impact fees, what that looks like, kind of direct it ahead of time to what your projects, your goals are?
I kind of try and do that every year when I do my budget. It's hard. I mean, I never would have expected last year that we would have collected $12 million for all that industrial. I can make some, just based on, let's say, in the KPI. We kind of have a schedule for, we had a pretty robust discussion at DRC this morning for the
Thank you. I need to get that recording. Thank you. Yes.
Project, and they gave us their schedule. They have to put all their infrastructure in first. And their first piece is going to be the northern part of the industrial development. And then they'll start bringing on the rest of it. But they're, you know, on a four-year schedule. So with regard to that, yes, we can do some good forecasting. But as you know, in order for the pioneering agreement up there to work, the impact fees have to be raised. It's, 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 it's based on increased impact fees. And those developers, thank goodness, are in support of raising impact fees.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? If not, anybody from the public who should speak on this matter, come on down.
Albert McKimme, 3603 Golden Gem Road. I found it interesting just now that it appears that just by widening a road substantially, it can be designated as being able to be rehabilitated. It's one of the words I've heard recently used here. So if you have impact fees for 3,000 or 4,000 homes in a particular area, does that necessitate that it can be used in that area? Or will it be used anywhere in the city? Because immediately, it springs to mind that Golden Gem Road is grossly narrowed, that the city has no intention of doing anything with it, because apparently it belongs to Orange County. But if City of Apopka has collected the impact fees for all the houses on Golden Gem Road, do they have a responsibility for doing Golden Gem Road within a reasonable period? And I still come back to the question I asked months ago. What do you really mean by rehabilitating a road?
Dennis New, 105 West Magnolia. I understand the need for the impact fees and the roads and stuff, but I have a question about something that the nice lady said, that only one department in the city is fully staffed. Is that, is that what I heard you say?
Yes, I said that, but that was just
I mean, is it because of working conditions or pay that we're not fully staffed? They're only doing 10 permits or something in the building department at a time from a builder? Don't we have a responsibility to staff all of the departments appropriately? Are we not paying enough? Is the compensation package not right? Is it the working conditions? Why are we so understaffed? That's my question. Y'all think about it.
Okay. Anybody else in the public who should speak? All right. If not, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion to approve ordinance number 3001 at first reading and hold over for second reading and adoption.
So, hold on, I did bring up a good question, not necessarily the staffing, but the, are we, do the fees have to be used in that, like, where it impacts?
We don't have impact fee districts.
Okay.
It can be used really anywhere in the city.
Citywide. Okay.
But to, to be in line with the intent of the law, the impact fees collected are to be used to mitigate the impacts of a specific development. So the money that's collected in the KPI will be used in the KPI. And while I'm here, not to sound like a broken record, but we are taking the northern half of Golden Gem Road as ours, that agreement has been drafted. And we're going to bring that up to city standards, because the county doesn't want to do that. They can do what they want with the southern half. Most of the impacts will be on the northern end. And they believe that they're going to resurface and put some sidewalks. We're going to flatten the road, make all the safety improvements, sidewalk, trails, streetlights, widen, turn lanes. So, not widen to four lanes. It'll be more like a three-lane segment. So we are addressing all the roads in the KPI.
Is Orange County, do we agree to a, they were contributing in some capacity at some point, correct?
No.
Well, they did discuss it.
They discussed $750,000.
Well, I had heard a seven-figure number at one point.
I heard through a rumor that they thought they could come up with $2 million, but when we met with them last week, they were very closed-mouth every time we talked about money.
Okay.
They said they don't have any money. They're spending all their impact fee money from this district on All-American Boulevard and what was the other road? Something else. Even though they've collected over $20 million worth of impact fees within the city and within a small radius outside of the city limit. So, you know, we asked.
So the agreement's in place or going to be in place to take over the road?
It's been drafted.
Drafted, okay.
I'm waiting on the legal description sketch. We're taking half of Golden Gem. We're taking, they decided that the piece of Sadler Road that we're building on the west side of Golden Gem, they decided that that was their right-of-way.
Say that last part again. The Sadler part?
The Sadler on west side of Golden Gem that we're about to put under construction. They decided that was theirs and tried to impose on, on our development their design standards, which brought the project to a screeching stop. So I'm having to take that piece of road, too, even though it's not a road yet.
Okay. And so in that drafted agreement, and I know that's not what we're talking about right now, but this just opened up a lot of different things. In that drafted agreement, are they contributing in any capacity then?
To county?
Financially, yeah.
Nothing. We're taking the road. It becomes ours, our total responsibility.
My understanding is that they're doing, are they not providing monies for study?
Nothing.
It seems to be in conflict with what I'm hearing.
Yeah. They're, what they told us is, is they're going to do what they're going to do on the southern end. They're giving us nothing. We can either let them give us some money, which would not be enough to do the whole road. So, you know, I have to be a good steward of the money I have. And the money that, that we have forecasted in the KPI, I can't afford to do the whole road. So I'm doing the part that we impact, that's adjacent to the properties that are in the KPI and are coming under the heavier development. The county has the easier piece to fix. It's pretty flat. It doesn't have some of the site distance issues, and it's the part of the road that the trucks run up to go to the dump, just the way they designed it. We're going to fix the northern piece so it's safe for all users.
So it, I guess, what, what do you consider the northern piece? Again, I'm sorry for all the questions.
From the road is called Capital Reef Way. It's, there is a development that's about halfway down on the east side of the road.
Okay. Just north of our pond?
Yep. From there, I go logical termini, a logical termini.
Okay.
And it's, it's fair, well, it's fair for them. We're getting the lion's share of the fix.
Okay. And then, I know 800,000 for however long that is, is not a lot.
That wouldn't even resurface the road, much less put sidewalks, streetlights.
No, but it's 800,000. I'll take any money I can get. If, if we're not going to get any, I'd rather get some.
Yeah, but, but if I, if they give us $800,000, then they expect me to do the whole road. And that's a $10 million fix.
Oh, so they're not, okay.
No, no. That's what I'm saying.
They say, hey, we'll give you 800, but you got to, you have to finish the road.
Yeah, and take the road, too. Road maintenance is really expensive. And so to take a road that, it's, it's functionally safe, it's ugly, the lanes are narrow, but that's the way the county designed and built it, even though it's a functionally classified road, which means it should carry heavy, heavier traffic volumes. You know, we should not fix all the county's problems. We're fixing the ones that we're creating. I'll give you another example. The intersection of Round Lake Road and Kelly Park Road is failing, but we're fixing that. But it's not failing because of city traffic. It's failing because people are coming off the interchange, and they're going through that intersection, and they're going to their homes out in unincorporated Orange County and over into Lake County. But we're fixing that anyway, because it is, it's, you know, it's half, half that intersection is ours.
Okay.
It's just easier to not fight about stuff like that.
Well, okay. So, and that was all discussed last week in the meeting?
Friday.
Friday. Will we get an update on that, just to kind of understand that?
Yeah, what I'm doing is
I just want to make sure, yeah, just
I'm putting together a summary of what I believe we agreed to. It covers a lot of projects in the city.
Okay.
Because honestly, Orange County is holding us up. They're holding up development. They're holding up the signal at Martin Road and Akoya Apopka Road, because they won't give me a permit. And that signal needs to go in. And we're paying 100% of that, so.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. All right. Looking for a motion to approve ordinance number 3001 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption. So moved. Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution 2023-11.
Resolution 2023-11, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2022 and ending September 30th, 2023, providing for a budget amendment.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Before you, we have revolus, resolution number 2023-11, a med, budget amendment number 12. This is related to the Economic Development Department budget that was approved by council a few months ago. City council approved the establishment of that department with the funding of our coronavirus funding. This budget amendment incorporates that funding into that department in the amount of 200,000 dollars.
Okay. Any questions for Blanche?
No.
Go ahead. Sorry. I've been dominating it.
I, I, I had one, I guess, at, at the very bottom where it says total amendment. It says 400,000 there, but at the top it says 200,000 there. Sorry.
Actually, it's 200,000 and that's what's in the description, 200,000. The total 400,000 includes the transfer of the funds from the grant fund to the general fund. In every amendment where we're transferring funds, you're going to see that doubling.
So it's going, can you walk us through that, that process? Credits to debits? Can you walk us through that?
Yes. The funding will be coming out of Fund 150 in the amount of 200,000 dollars and transferred into the general fund in the amount of 200,000 dollars. The same funds will go into the general fund under department number 4022 at 140,000 for salary wages and fringe, 30,000 for other contractual services, 10,000 for travel and per diem, and 20,000 for operating supplies. Because the two columns and debits and credits, you total them all the way down, that equates to 400 on each side. But the amount of funds that are being transferred only is 200,000 dollars.
So it's two separate transactions. If you think about it, the, the top two transactions, if we wanted to think about it, it would be a subtotal if you wanted to think about it that way. And then below the line, you're just basically crediting from the grant fund and then allocating now as you've got
If we did need the
Two commissioners missed point. I mean, I think we, I think you mentioned that we all asked the same question during the pre-council meeting in terms of that number, so.
And then this question, I guess, is for Commissioner Becker more so. Does this break down how you expected it? What does that look like for you? Is that?
Yeah, I think, and I don't know, Ms. Patton, did you, did you provide the, the pay scale for us? I'm trying to remember if you had that near. Did you have the pay range when you posted that position?
Yeah.
All right. So is it in line with what that allocation is that we're doing tonight? Okay. But yeah, I, I think the idea would be is, yeah, that's a, it's a guide. I think if you find talent that's a little bit over that and we have to reshuffle some of the below the salary and wages that you would, you would fluctuate to suit.
Correct. It was based on the discussion that you and I had.
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure that was in line with your expectations, so.
Cool. Any other questions?
They did put out an RFP for it, right?
RFP, uh, job, rec.
Job applicant.
Is that, what's the status of that?
And what is the status?
I noticed that it was only posted internally.
No, no, it's external.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry, I've been sitting for a while. So the status, there was one internal applicant. There are 11 external applicants, so I reviewed those. I finished reviewing those today. Have to bring those to the mayor for a review as well, so that should be tomorrow. So we just have to review those external applicants and the internal one.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So you have 11 and one internal.
Any, any other questions? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve resolution 2023-11. So moved. Got a motion by Commissioner Becker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Fisher Velazquez, city council report.
It's, I, it's a quiet for me for the last two weeks, but just a reminder that the Apopka Women's Foliage Festival is coming up the last weekend of April. So put it on your calendar and we hope, we're hoping for a sunny weekend.
Mr. Becker?
Yeah, um, so a couple of things that were brought up during public comment. You know, the first and foremost, the RFP process, still we're within a cone of silence. So in terms of
Yeah, we can't talk.
The, the mechanics of the whole process that's going on right now, I, I don't think what's been suggested during public comment, we even have the authority, authority to do so at this moment in time. But the fact of the minute, the, the logistics of this thing is people that respond to the RFP process, it's going to be presented to this council. We, the authority of this council will be at that time of whether or not to approve it or disapprove it. We're not forced to make a decision based off of the bids that are, that are coming in at that point. We would have the opportunity to say that it's not sufficient. I will echo points that it was written in a way that's highly disappointing. Speaking of disappointment, and again, you played it on the, on the, in public comment too, about the, about the trailer itself and the mayor's comments to the local media outlets. To continue, when, when someone first posted that, that quote on social media, I thought it was originally spoken at the news conference back in December. And when I found out that it was, you know, like the day before, was just totally tone deaf to the entire situation, to keep on striking this as just, it's just a sand trailer and it's, and it's gone through four or five past administrations as the excuse as to why it was even remotely involved in this accident, I think. And again, the, the word that I used in my own quote to a local outlet was disgusting because it is. The fact of the matter is, is that you have been sitting in this chair for going on five years. So to the day that you can use the excuse as four or five past administrations ended the first day you sat in that chair back in 2018, every day since then, it's your responsibility to make sure the men and women of this city are safe in the job that they do day to day. So I think that, that interview was disgusting and again, we've, we've been in closed-door sessions talking about what we should be, you know, should or shouldn't be talking in the public realm related to this ongoing investigation. And yet you, at every turn, I don't know if it's because you're advised to do so or not, or you're not being advised not to do it, but this is ridiculous. You know, we, last meeting, we voted three to two that we have no confidence in this chief and to say, and you publicly put out there that this thing should have been decommissioned long ago, and yet you've sat in this chair for five years. You or the, or the chief are accountable for that. So either you take the accountability or the chief does. But for this to keep ongoing and for you to perpetuate it through media outlets is ridiculous. That's all I have to say.
Commissioner Smith?
Well, I'm gonna hold my comments in reference to the RFP until it comes back, but I would like to take this opportunity to thank you, Mayor, Commissioner Velazquez, Commissioner Nesta for attending a homegoing service to my sister and for Commissioner Becker's thoughts and prayers as well. It was a tough time and so it was really encouraging, supportive to see you all there at that time. Thank you.
Mr. Nesta?
Mine will be quick. We did move finally and my wife kept the house together, so I thank her for that because it was chaos. So thank Lauren for that. Wanted to get an update on the RFP for the financial advisor. Just wanted to see, when is that close date and when can we expect, I guess, an update on where we're going with that?
You should sit closer.
We are reviewing the applicants.
So it's closed already?
It is closed.
Okay.
And I want to say we got seven good, seven applicants. So we are reviewing those applicants to make sure, our proposers, to make sure that they are responsible and responsive. So I know we're down to two, but they're running so very close, so we're trying to make sure we verify everything.
When can we expect that back to us?
I'll definitely have it at the next council meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it. That's it. Okay. Michael, anything?
Nothing.
Okay. Under the mayor's report, we'll go back just, just a little bit, just kind of the highlights. We had a really good meeting Friday. Pam and Jim, let me think, who else we have? That was just it, the two of us and whole team from Orange County, talking about the CRA that, that's coming, it will, it will sunset next year, so we want to, January 1st, so looking at renewing the CRA. Talking about roads, as Pam alluded to, some of them we'll have, we're working through a, you know, a draft for y'all to look at. Talking about some community, 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 community development, you know, issues and then communication. It's just, we've, we felt a little, we feel like we're given all the information on, on projects that are in, in the, the JPAs and we, we don't feel like the communication or haven't felt like communication from the county coming back our way has been up to the standards that we, we set for ourselves. And so we've asked the county to, let's, let's be a little more cooperative on communication, on developments within our JPA. For instance, the, there's affordable housing complex on Martin, affordable housing complex on Plymouth-Sorrento and we, we don't hear it until it's, it's a done deal. Not that it's a problem. The other one was the, the, the self-storage
On Wester?
We had no idea. Came out of nowhere. So we just, we just asked for, for better communication that we, you know, where we, we, every, every, I know that's one of Jim's, is he gone?
Yeah, he had it out.
Okay. You know, one of the things we, we pride ourselves in, when we got a development within the JPA, we want to make sure they get it and they, if they've got comments. And so it, it was a good, very productive meeting. They had, gosh, eight, they had the eight, a lot of directors. So I mean, it was a very well, high-level meeting and so we, we felt really good, I think, coming out. We're, we're going to come up with some, some, some ways to, that we can better cooperate with the county. Obviously they're our, our partner in a lot of things and so we will make sure that's, that we, we do it the right way. As Commissioner Velazquez said, yes, Saturday, April 29th and Sunday, April 30th will be the Florida, the, the foliage festival. We've got a tree giveaway, got, it's going to be a really, really big, big event. We're excited for it. The opening ceremonies for everybody will be at 9:30 on Saturday, so be there. And the last thing is, although we'll be, one more meeting before it, the, the prayer breakfast is coming up on Thursday, May the 4th. Remember doors open at 6:30. Program starts promptly at 7:00, so we can get everybody out the door by, you know, so they can get, get to work for those that have to work. So it was great to hear that the ministerial alliance, thanks to Pastor Bradford, they, they've got a table for, we have the Fellowship of Christian Athletes. We've got two chapters, one at each high school and they were generous enough to offer up half a table each school so we can bring some of the, the students that are, obviously have a heart for service and, and, and our, our way of life. So we, thank you, thank you. And so with that, we'll call it a night.